Welcome to the ninth episode of the Class Cast Podcast. I'm your host, Ryan Tibbins. Today we'll be speaking with Ram Venkatachalam and close and running for school board in the Blue Ridge District here in Loudoun County. Ram, thank you for coming in.
Ryan, thanks for having me here. Congrats on you achieving 40 on 40.
Yeah.
This past year, and I'm sure you didn't get there. You know, people typically see when somebody's successful, yay, somebody's up there. But you know, there's a lot of, you know, rock and hard work and sweat that has gone to where you have achieved that. So kudos to you and way to go.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah, that's I, that's been my joke all school year. Anytime somebody points out, so I got a couple of words this year. I say, well, it's I've peaked. There's nowhere to go but down. So a long, slow decline to retirement now.
Exactly.
Welcome to the 10th episode of the Class Cast Podcast. I'm your host, Ryan Tibbins. Today we're talking with Ian Serratkin, the candidate for Loudoun County School Board in the Blue Ridge District. How you doing?
I'm doing great. How are you doing?
Tired, you know, it's a long, long week, but I don't get to complain because you, like we were just saying, are way busier than me.
For the next 18 days.
Right, right, right. Yeah, that's who's counting. So what for you was the deciding factor in deciding to run? I always think like,
Sure.
We might have a general interest, but very few people go from the interest to getting off the couch and doing. For you, what provided that motivation?
Sure. So for me, so my kids are six and four, and I've traveled the world extensively as part of my profession. And I'm thankful for that. I've traveled within the States and overseas. I've been to small cities, you know, towns, villages in the States, you know, Aberdeen, west coast of Seattle, where Kurt Cobain is from Nirvana Band, and also overseas. So part of the travel, also I've been to big cities, New York, LA, and stayed there as well. But part of the travel is I learned what's, you know, what's important in life, what's the essence of life? Giving back to our community more importantly. And when my daughter was born six years ago, I wanted less of the travel and be more home. So I took up a change in my profession, career path, and wanted to stay more local to the DC area. Prior to that, I used to fly out of Dallas Airport every week pretty much for 10 years. And so when I took the change, I still had that, you know, drive and energy to do things, get things done. Because when I travel, I'm always, you know, it could be Monday night football or, you know, weekend football. Still, I'm, but I'm still catching up the games, but still I'm working on something. So when my daughter was born, I was so excited. I'm home, but at the same time, I don't want to be sitting home the evening, you know, you know, bickering, you know, picking over pots and pans at home.
Right.
I was like, what do I do? What do I do? I mean, I enjoy the time with my daughter at home, but not all evenings.
Right, gotta stay busy.
Busy, right? So then I volunteered in my community in Brambleton HOA for three years and now running for school board. The school in particular, to run for a school board, you know, it's near and dear to everybody from what I can tell so far. You know, it has the most impact in any family's life because their kid is in the school system. Regardless of whether they're, the kids are in elementary, middle, or high school, doesn't matter. And so my daughter is in first grader, she's a first grader. And two years ago, when there was a discussion about whether to have full day kindergarten or not in the county school system. So that's when I started paying attention to what's happening in our school system. So is my daughter going to go? And she was in a private pre-K. So that's when I started paying attention to whether she's going to go into a public school system or she's going to stay in a private kindergarten. So but, you know, then I started following the local happenings and whatnot on a larger school system level. Because, and I wasn't necessarily excited on what I was reading because, you know, as a county resident, we typically pay 68 cents to a dollar to taxes. And I, from given my consulting background, I felt there was a, you know, 2017 fall to be specific. There was a new bus software rolled out, which they paid millions of dollars, the school system, you know, from the administration, blessed by the administration, school board executed by the administration. It wasn't necessarily executed, and there was a fallout for a few weeks on that. This is primarily the densely populated areas in Dallas and Ashburn that was impacted. And so that's one. And then, so this was 2017 fall. And then there was seclusion and restraint incidents that was happening on middle schools. And you probably know, might recall this, Ryan, Stonebridge High School student who, boxing student who attempted, you know, killing himself on campus, was declared dead in the hospital. And there were three series of incidents, and I saw a pattern in here. So there was a school bus fallout, you know, and I'm not saying when I get on the board, January 2020, these issues are not going to happen. These are going to happen, you know, but the, like you said, you know, the leadership or the ownership and leadership comes, you know, if something falls out, you know, you accept your mistake, take ownership for it, make public, get let public know that you are on top of it. Make sure you rectify it, and more importantly, be sure that it does not happen again.
Right.
First time it's a mistake, second time it's not. So.
You start to see a pattern.
Pattern, right? So and that's what I saw on the school board for that one year. And I said, given my background, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to bring changes to the school system and I'm going to run for the seat. And so I started my efforts to be a school board representative.
This is a long and complicated process. What, what made you decide to declare when you did? Like you said, you're the first person to declare candidacy. What was the motivation to both enter to the race or maybe to do it as early as you did or whatever? What, what are you doing?
I did get that question, you know, so especially some of the sitting school board members where, you know, they're in past election cycles. It hasn't really gotten going until the summer of the election. And so they're kind of looking at me like I'm crazy, like, why are you starting so early? What are you, who's this crazy guy who's showing up two years ahead of time doing this? So my thought motivations were, you know, number one, I, I'm, you know, I've been involved in school advocacy for a while. But, you know, anything related to running for office or politics was completely new to me. So I wanted to put my name out there to kind of let people know who I was and, you know, what I, what I was passionate about, why I was running, and just kind of build up as much support as I possibly could over the next two years.
Okay, so I guess we're doing this in slightly different order than I've been asking them. But what was, I mean, obviously, starting early gives you both the time and the opportunity to shake more hands, to attend more meetings, to your name is certainly out there and all that. What's your motivation to run sort of like, what's the goal? Is it just you like to be involved in the community or there are particular issues that matter to you? Like, what's, what's your motivation for this particular job?
Sure. So I'll start by kind of rewinding to when we first, my family first moved to Loudoun in 2013. It was right, we moved from Prince William County. We lived in Woodbridge before that, and so we moved to Aldi in 2013, right before my daughter started kindergarten. And it was pretty soon after that, it was midway through her kindergarten year, that there was an enormous budget fight between the school board and the board of supervisors. There was a shortfall of about $40 million, just under $40 million. And as a result, the school board proposed or considered closing four of Western Loudoun's community schools. Aldi Elementary, where my daughter went, Hamilton Elementary, Lincoln Elementary, and what was Hillsborough Elementary at the time. And so that was my first time really paying attention to what the school board was doing and why they were making the, some of the decisions they were making. And got involved with the community. We spoke at public hearings and really garnered public support for keeping the schools open.
Are they still open?
Three of the four of them are.
Yeah.
Hillsborough Elementary, it did stay open that year, but it, they saw the writing on the wall. But back to, back to the, the question about why I decided to run. So that was the first time I really started getting involved. And then in 2015, the incumbent of the Blue Ridge seat, Jill Turgeon, no one challenged her for the seat. She won on a post. And I felt like throughout that process and other things that I saw the school board do, I wasn't, there were some pretty significant things that I disagreed with. And so I thought this time around, I'm not going to wait for someone else to put their hat into the ring and run. Because as 2015 showed, there's no guarantee that anyone else at all will step up to run. So that was one of the reasons why I decided to run and also why I announced so early to kind of stake my claim in the ground and say, well, I'm, I'm doing this. If you were thinking of doing it because no one else was doing it.
Somebody already got it.
Someone already, someone already got it. Yeah. It worked for a while, but then, you know, ended up getting, getting opposed in the race.
Right, right. So that's, okay, so that's interesting. And that's, I might have mentioned this, I don't remember if I did, I might have mentioned this in one of the other discussions. But I always feel like why a person runs, regardless of their position on issues, like says a lot. And it's something that goes back to like Plato's Republic of like, you're, a lot of times your best candidates are reluctant. I'm doing it because either no one else will, or because the only other people who will, I do not or cannot trust. And so it's, it's, you know, anytime you see a person, I was thinking about this when I'm watching like presidential debates on TV. Anyone who looks like they're enjoying it too much, or there was no doubt that they were ever going to do it. Even if I agree with them on everything, I don't know that I actually want to vote for them. Like, I like the person who seems to be doing it out of some sort of sense of duty or obligation. You know, you're sort of like, I'm doing it because I have to, or because no one else will. It gives me a better feeling, regardless of position.
There's an old quote, people love trying to give power to those who don't want it.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it's a good spot to be in. And so.
And there, and there's certainly situations in which you want to look at the cost of the school and find ways to drive it down. You know, no one wants to waste money or spend money unnecessarily. But I feel like just in a lot of respects, the emphasis on data and peeling back that onion and finding out what, what the true numbers are. And whether correlation is equal to causality in that case, is the case, or whether it's just unrelated.
Yeah, and it probably like, the way people look at it probably has a lot to do with their own education. Where'd you go to school? What did you focus in? Did you like school, dislike school? So how did you feel about school?
So, um, school, so I was born and raised in southern part of India. That's my heritage. And at my grandparents' place, and I was homeschooled for a couple of years by them. And went to a small school setting where they lived. And in my fourth grade, I went to live with my parents, who lived in a suburban setting, similar to where we are today during this recording. And so I have, I bring in a unique experience that's truly reflective of what Blue Ridge is. Because we have growing parts in the east, which is suburban areas, and then there's transition policy area, which is Aldi. And then taking you to further west, to Percival, Round Hill, and Blumon, Hillsborough, which are, you know, homeschoolers and small school settings. At least at the elementary level. So that's, that's my schooling background. And I did engineering for my undergrad, computer science, engineering and masters in computer sciences. And, but for some reason, when I started, you know, doing actual job, I started liking people interaction more. So I started with computer science or technology consulting, if you will say. And moved away from technology consulting slowly onto business consulting and management consulting. So, so, you know, any, any, anything that you do involves people in life. And so I've been enjoying that so far. And what I do now is for the federal government, I do advisory services, which is basically a blend of technology, business, and management. That's, that's what, you know, puts foot on the table for my family, from me. And, you know, in terms of schooling, right? So I think teachers play a big role in any student's life. And personally, from my experience, you know, I liked languages when, as I was growing up, you know, it could be English. It could be, I, I speak Tamil at home, or it could be a Tamil language teacher, or, you know, chemistry, or math, or physics, or sciences, or economics for that matter. Always for me personally, it was all driven by teachers, you know, not necessarily, not necessarily, I'm saying that, you know, I have to be spoon fed. But they, they have always served as an inspiration. And, you know, it's not so much the subject, but also the personalities that they bring in. You know, it could be inspirational, or it could be detrimental for some students.
Right, right. Yeah, that's, I always say that, you know, you could probably learn most of this with a library card. If you can read and you can write and you can do at least basic math, you could probably teach yourself most of what you're getting in school, at least, at least through high school. But that doesn't mean that you would, or that you would have the same experience or enjoy it because there's a human element to it.
That's exactly right.
But probably someone's own experience in a big school or a small school probably changes how much you like or dislike the idea of that. So like for you, we'll do the school question.
What a great segue.
Yeah, right. Well, I started to say it earlier, I was like, I'll hang on to that. But for, for you, like, what was your experience in school, both thinking, say, through, through school, middle school, high school, college? What did you study? Did you like school, not like school? I mean, what was your experience?
Sure. So I grew up in New York on Long Island, and I went to my entire, I stayed there my entire primary and secondary schooling, and it was the Jericho School District, one of the very best public school districts in, in the United States. I don't know if it's still the case, but I know the last time I looked on, if, I can't remember if it was Niesher Great Schools, it was, it was number one on the list. So it was a rather unique public school experience, but a great one. So it was my, my high school, I'm sorry, my elementary school was fairly small. It was three classes per grade, so somewhere in between the tiny ones that we have in Western Loudoun. And then the, the eight or nine classes per grade that we have in, in the rest of Loudoun.
Right.
So we had two elementary schools, one middle school, one high school. That was the entire school district.
Yeah. So, so in New York, do they, they do districts, not counties, right?
Yeah.
So that's, in Pennsylvania, it was the same thing. You know, we had five elementary schools, one middle school, one high school. And so when I first started teaching in Virginia, like, the way we set up, and there's so many high schools, we're always adding, like, it took me, I probably worked here for two or three years before I like, really felt like I understood the system I was in. It's so different. Do you feel like your experience in high school was a positive one? And I say high school just because that's the point at which people start thinking, am I using the school? You know what I mean? Like, elementary school is a lot about how you feel, you're connected to your community. I mean, not that you're not learning, we should be learning a lot, but somewhere in high school is when most people sort of gain the awareness of what they're doing or why they're doing it. Do you think high school was as positive an experience as say the elementary school was where you were at?
I would say pretty equal. As far, I mean, it was an outstanding school experience from kindergarten through 12th grade. As far as what the opportunities were, what they offered. I feel like being a small school district allowed them to be very nimble, where you really could focus on each kid's needs. Rather than, you know, teaching to the middle, or, you know, just, you know, focusing on what the biggest clump of students needed. So it was, they had such an amazing amount of freedom because, you know, it's not, they didn't have 18 high schools to deal with.
Yeah, 18 high schools, 18 principals, all the, yeah.
Right. So it was just if you wanted to, you know, if, you know, I was reading above grade level. So I remember my first grade teacher took me, just said, you know, you're, we're going to get you better books to read. So she took me into the, like, teacher's storage closet and where they had, you know, every book that they didn't normally give, or wasn't in active circulation. And just said, you know, pick, giving you a stack of 40 books to read so that you don't bother me for books.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, that's, you know, that's both the sign of a teacher who's paying attention, which is good. It's also a sign of a teacher who has a number of kids they can manage, that they both could notice and could do something quickly about it.
Exactly.
And being in a smaller system, I think, like you said, you use the word, I think, nimble, right? It's one of the things that, you know, I go back and forth because my family, we live in Clark County. But one high school for the whole county, one middle school, two, I think, two elementary schools.
In Clark?
Yeah, in Clark. So I mean, it's, it's one of the smallest counties in the, in the state. But I think of that in terms of school system and say, as a teacher who works in a much bigger system. I think about like my kids, you know, not yet, but almost approaching school age. And I just think, you know, man, if you wanted to do something, anything, do something different, or institute a program, or whatever, like, that's a place where it can happen much easier. Now, the funding isn't always there, but the number of sort of hoops to jump through, or the number of cogs in the wheel, like, it's so much more streamlined. You know, I think nimble is probably a very good word for it. Like, if you want to act, you can. And bigger systems, everything goes slower.
In general, yeah.
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 For college, what did you do? Or, I assume you went to college. What did you do after high school?
Yes, after, so after high school, I went to the University of Illinois. I studied computer science, graduated with a bachelor's in that. And then I started working for, I interned with Lockheed Martin during college and then started working with them as a software developer, full-time after college, and then got my master's degree part-time on the side from Johns Hopkins while I was working. So I got my master's in information systems and technology from Johns Hopkins over a couple of years.
Right. Did you enjoy, like, I mean, some people will go to college and love it, and some people go to college as like a necessary evil. Did you enjoy college?
I enjoyed, yes. I enjoyed, I enjoyed college. It was a fantastic school for engineering. So I, I, I used a lot of what I learned, not, not every class and not in every way. But I feel like I did use a lot of what I learned, particularly with algorithms and not the kind of nuts and bolts of learning how to program, because that I had kind of taught myself or learned on the side or gotten during internships. But U of I had a very research focus. I didn't particularly enjoy the Midwest itself. So that was my four years out in the Midwest. And then after I graduated from college, I kind of ran back, back to the East Coast and ended up in the Maryland and Virginia area.
Okay. That's where academically, you know, you find yourself in the right place. Johns Hopkins is a great school. What do you do now?
So as I mentioned, I started as a software developer. I kind of quickly, kind of against my will at first, became a project lead and a project manager. And then discovered that I was pretty good at it and enjoyed it. So I kind of made my way up the ranks in technical project management. So I'm, for the last nine years, I've been the director of IT services for a small government contractor called PDRI. We do, the company as a whole does human capital consulting. So more or less, they try to help the HR departments of the government agencies and big, big commercial firms do their jobs better. Hire better people, figure out who to promote, do better performance management. And on the IT side of the house, we develop software systems that supports that or implement it.
Think about a school, think about one school, so not school board issues, but you're given a building, you're given a budget. You're the king of the school, you've got a year, you've got a couple of years to roll something out. In your mind, what is, if such a thing exists, what would be the perfect school? Like, what, what would you do differently, even if that means, I mean, I've had people say like, two classes and you're done. Or, you know, we lengthen the day by five hours, or we change the requirements. You can do anything. Imagine it's like a private school setting. To you, what does a great school look like, or what would you want to make your school into?
So to me, a great school would look like, we need to have the, our teaching staff, you know, educators. I think I strongly feel we need to have the right leaders in place in the schools. Doesn't matter private, public. That's why if you, if you notice, Ryan, when they open Villasfer, not Villasfer, Villar Intermediate and other elementary schools, they typically roll in, the school system or the administration typically moves principals or APs from, most likely, most likely it's principal who have been principals in other schools, they move them over there. And then they give the autonomy to choose.
Choose your staff.
To the staff. Why? It's because it's, and so I'm always, like I said, it's about, you know, you know, my, it's not about micromanaging, it's about macro managing. You need to hire the right people. So that's, that's the approach I bring in. You need to hire the right people, and you, you should make sure that they have all the tools to be successful. Same within a school system. Say, it could be a private school, and you hire the right, or bring in the right principal. You may not hire somebody externally, or you may, but bring in that person, right person. For that saying, I'm not saying, you know, Ram or Ryan would be the right person for high school, for every high school, for every middle or elementary. So there's elements there, there's factors there. So bring the right person, and you have to trust them that they're going to choose the best, you know, football coach, best physics in your chair, math chair, whatever it is. So I think that's the key. And also making sure that you are, I mean, if I'm the, say, if I'm the, I'm the investor from a private school, or, you know, I'm the owner, let's say. I want to probably check in with them to be sure that, of course, we're going to have constant check-ins every week or, you know, twice in a week, whatever it is. They have, they need, they have everything they need to keep going. I need something. So I think that's the key.
Okay. So sort of the format of school you're comfortable with. You think, you know, if we have the right people in the right places, then what we're doing works or can work. I mean, I think it works for a lot of kids. Okay. That's, and that's actually, it's one of the reasons I keep, I keep making the drive to Broad Run is, there are a lot of good schools, and there's a lot of good principals, but you don't always know what you're getting into. And so I drive probably farther than I need to because I'm in a place where I feel good and I'm mostly trusted, you know, and things, things go okay. And I don't know that everyone, I don't want to say that not everyone isn't in as good a situation, but I know that not everyone feels like they're in as good a situation. And I think that can be important. If you were given a school, and, and maybe even think of it as like a private school setting. So regardless of sort of legislation, you have a school, you have a building, you have a budget, you have a student body. You can do anything you want in that school. You could be a nature school, you could be year-round, you could keep them there, it'd be a boarding school, you know, whatever. In your mind, what is the ideal school? Like, what would you do with your school if you had that opportunity?
Oh, it would be exactly the same as we have now, except we wouldn't celebrate Columbus Day. I'm joking, I'm joking. I think we touched on it a little bit already, because I gave, I gave some thought to the question. And there's just, there's so many different ways you could go. Like, if you go to a year-round schedule like Middleburg Charter is, is that better, is that worse, or is it just different? You know, if you have STEM as an, as a elective, like Hillsborough Charter does, is that better or worse, or just different? If you do, you know, computer science immersion, if you do foreign language immersion, there's so many different ways that you can go. That what I would say, not for a specific school, but for the school district as a whole. I'd, I'd just really like to see each school almost be an experiment of, an experiment by design.
Right.
Where you're trying something out, you're trying to move, you're trying to move education forward. You're trying to find the most optimal way of educating the kids at that school. Making sure that not only at a school level, but even to an individual student level. You're taking each student and giving them as perfect of a year of growth as you possibly could. So I would almost, from a macro school district level, I would love to be able to go visit all 94 schools in the county. And for each of them to have a unique story to tell. About the things that they're trying at that school. You know, like we talked about before, how they're measuring success, what they're hoping to achieve by it, and what they hope to be able to bring back and, and roll out to a wider population if it succeeds.
Okay. You know, and I, I think choice is really important. And, and I think, you know, choice sort of goes two ways, you know, either you can choose, say, within the classroom, where the teacher presents one lesson, or this is what we're doing. And then the students get to choose, say, the book they're reading, or the product they create. Or, which is, in some, in some classes, in some settings, anything, it's very good. And it's also sometimes difficult to manage well, because you've got a lot of different things happening in one room.
Or you could have 28 kids to have.
28 different things, and it's, and it's hard to provide support for it, but you never want to limit the kids' opportunities if you can. The other sort of way you think about it is almost more like college setting where you, the kids have more choice in the kinds of classes they take. But when you're in the class, you're sort of doing that class. And there's a million probably other ways to create that individual experience for kids. But it's probably like, working from a system we're in now, to something that focuses more on like the individual student. You got to give the kids or their parents or the combination some sway, you know, some, some influence in it. And I don't know how you, like, if you, if you were, say, to move to more of like a magnet school, or, you know, sort of specialized programs. If people get to apply for and go to those schools, that creates that opportunity. You know, you get to do what you're into. And I, I think, and I'm thinking about in the high school level. You just see a lot of kids who have a lot of interests, sitting in a lot of classes they're not interested in. And, and, you know, it's, it's a tough spot, because it's not that what you're doing in class isn't important, but it's not important to that kid, or at least in that moment. And the kid doesn't have any way out, and the teacher doesn't have any way to help them out sometimes. You know, it's like, we just got to make this as bearable as we can. And I think that's, anytime I feel like I'm trying to make something more bearable, I just think that I'm probably doing the wrong thing in the first place.
And that's, yeah, I think you're getting to a little bit, what you also talked about before, about, you know, the academies of Loudoun and some of the programs there. Where, you know, one of the things I would really like to do is find ways to take a lot of those programs back to the home schools. So that, you know, there's, there's for sure more than 40 kids in the county who are interested in horticulture or biotechnology programs. There's only, I think, what are we up to, 108, 120 seats in the academies of science. There's only, I think, what, what are we up to? A hundred and eight, a hundred and twenty seats in the Academy of Science. I think the, for the really specialized programs, when it requires technology or infrastructure, that it doesn't make sense to roll out to every school. Like, you don't want every school to have a car garage, right? It totally makes sense for that to be restricted to the, to the academies. Where you're gonna invest in one.
Yeah.
Facility to do that.
A lot of technology, you know.
Right. Or, you know, the print shop that they have there, that's, you know, state of the art, you probably don't know, you know, unless you're just, you know, rolling in money. You may not want to invest in putting that into every school.
Right.
But there are a lot of courses in the course catalog that I think you can take back and to create more opportunities for kids.
Yeah.
And I, I just, I think we're, we're both saying the same thing in different ways, just providing those opportunities so that, you know, it's not. You have to recognize that it's not college and you have to provide more structure than you do at that level.
Right.
While at the same time, trying to let kids explore, explore and find out what they're passionate about.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know.